...to order and we will start with the roll call.
Councilor Powers.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
I'm still here. While she's checking the microphone, I would just like to acknowledge that the City Council observes the community of character pledge and do our best to try to live up to it. Okay, so we've had the roll call. If we could have a moment of silent prayer and then that will be followed by Troop Eighty-Four Tigers with a salute, Pledge of Allegiance. We can now have the pledge of allegiance.
Attention. Audience, please rise. Pardon events. Pardon, pardon, please. Salute, please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, et fabrici, and first and for all. Two. Pardon, dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you, Troop Eighty-Four, and I just wanted to mention that they had Sunday their blue and gold ceremony at Littleton and it was excellent. All of these scouts did a great, a great job. Thank you. Are we ready for the video statement?
Yes. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocables.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Can you hear me now? Okay. Sorry. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cis.galt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, thank you. As you may or may not know, our city manager is enjoying himself in sunny Hawaii. And in his place tonight, I'd like to introduce Barry Weiss, who's the Assistant City Manager, sitting over there. Okay, are we ready? Okay. Agenda approval additions and deletions, council members. Anything you want to pull?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to pull E six, just for a short, we have a revised letter for that.
And I'm going to pull E four. Anything else? I will start off with E four. Any public comments?
Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker identification form located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Matthew Padilla.
Good evening, distinguished mayor, council members. My name is Matthew Padilla. Audience members, I live in Elk Grove. Please don't hold that against me. I'm here tonight to ask City Council to please rescind the ordinance that bans medical cannabis in the city of Galt. And I'd like to first present, I went out on a little signature finding or signature asking mission, so I have some signatures here. Not a lot, inclement weather and my schedule, obviously, I could have been out there. I probably got seventy-five signatures and it maybe took me an hour and a half. As far as people I was approaching, I probably got, out of five people I asked, three people that were willing to sign my signature. A little bit about myself, thank you very much. Don't leave on me now. A little bit about myself, I've owned a yoga shop, a bar and grill, catering truck, a delicatessen, and this next business endeavor that I'm trying to go into is the medical cannabis field. Hopefully will be not only successful myself, but for the city of Galt. Recently, California Board of Equalization reports the state of California collects between fifty and one hundred million dollars in taxes on medical cannabis right now. I'm asking you, the desperate, I mean, I've been to a few of these council meetings and the prevailing thing I keep hearing and keeps coming up is the lack of money, lack of funding, we're cutting back, we need to cut back. I'm looking for, this is an alternative source of revenue, maybe something that hasn't looked into, but I know recently there is the utility tax, it's being, the utility bills are being raised, I believe in March, and this is maybe some way that you don't have to, you know, depend on the citizens for money when the city needs it. It can raise revenue on its own and stand on its own merit. Another thing that I was noticed, when I was collecting my signatures, is a lot of people in this town actually have medical cannabis cards and they were, I guess there was a cannabis store that was opened here and then it was closed down. Well, a lot of the people were telling me that they have to go out of the city now to get their medicine. And, I don't know, it just seems, I mean, a lot of them taking cars or buses or however they mean to get there, to get out of the city when they are citizens of Galt to buy their medicine, I say. Another thing you have to look at is the number of liquor stores and bars that are in the town, I used to own a bar, I understand it, but the number of DUIs that happen, the number of drunken disorderlies that arise in the city. There's a fact right now that, and I know, I know one of the fears that everyone has is the kids, I have two kids of my own, I have daughters and girl scouts, I have a son that plays baseball and does karate, so I'm involved in PTA, I understand the children. But the fact is, right now, is more teenagers are trying alcohol and having problems with alcohol and less problems with cannabis. So it's actually declining for teenagers, but, you know, what I'm talking about here is, and this is my last note, and I've got a minute and forty-five left, I just want you to suspend your preconceived notions that you have of cannabis. Because I'm not discussing, you know, pop parties in someone's garage, I'm discussing medicine for terminally ill patients. People have AIDS, multiple sclerosis, cancer, rheumatoid, you know, diseases of the bones and hands of elderly. This is something that really truly helps people. And if you allow me to come into this city, I promise you, it will be done professionally. The city will benefit, patients will benefit, and I can assure you, I will give everything in my power to make sure it will be something to be proud of in the city of Galt. I went to a flea market today, very nice, by the way. At a nice time. So I just ask, I don't, last time I came here, I wasn't sure, I sat through the whole meeting, and I'm not sure if it's something that you can check on now, if you want to put it on the agenda for next month, or maybe we can do a vote right now and rescind order. I don't want to become, I'm becoming the thing that wouldn't leave, but, you know, I'm determined, determined to sway your opinion on this, because I know it can be done. I know it can be done.
Thank you.
So i- is it something that we want to vote on? Is it something that we're going to talk about later, discuss it?
It's nothing that we could vote on tonight.
I know, but we could vote on me putting it on the agenda and I can come with a full PowerPoint presentation, give you some great statistics, things like that.
You would either need to get the staff, the city manager, to put it on the agenda or the city council members, if I'm correct, and if I'm not, city attorney interrupts me.
So I think that is correct, but sir, just as a, just to be very candid about this, I think that the council has heard your presentation, and if any one of the members is interested in revisiting the existing ban, they have the right to place an item on the agenda to have this matter looked at. But absent, absent bad action by one or more council members, then the existing ban would in fact stay in place.
Okay. Now, because this is a democracy and you work for the people, my signatures obviously didn't sway anybody, a lot of people that I was getting signatures from said, if you want me to come to the council meeting to voice my opinion, I live in Galt, to voice my opinion of what I want, is it going to take me coming back next council meeting with a lot of citizens from Galt? I mean, all I'm asking is to be put on the agenda. Three of you guys can do it. I know you can. Please.
Well.
Keep an open mind to this.
We've heard your request, I'm sure each one of us will take it into consideration, but the same stance that it has for the past two meetings that you attended, I didn't hear anyone that seemed interested in.
I understand that.
Doing it at this time.
I understand that.
Of course, we have, we're open to the public and you're welcome to, you know, to come anytime you want to.
Okay, so, next council meeting, is there any chance if I come with citizens of Galt? If I take something out in the newspaper? I mean, this is, once again, I'm asking you to do what's best for your city.
I hear you.
If we have, please.
May I make a suggestion, because this is not agendized. If you want to meet, that's what we're trying to say, your time is up.
Okay.
And you've got five minutes, and I think we all heard you.
Okay.
But you can meet with one of the council members or meet with the mayor to further your conversation.
During the week, would you be willing to meet with me in public or in private?
We always are willing to meet with citizens, either from Galt or even Elk Grove.
I said, don't hold that against me. Well, thank you very much for your time, I do appreciate that, and I'll be contacting you individually. Thank you.
Randy.
Hunwoodson.
Good luck. Help me out, Mike.
Hunwoodson.
There we go.
Randy Hunwoodson, City of Galt. Regarding, a month ago, I asked five questions. Before I get started, I just, I'm not a public speaker, so try not to interrupt me for last meeting. Throws me off track. Thank you for your invitation to come talk to me privately about the questions, but there's no need, they're not complicated questions, they're not complicated answers. The first three questions, yes and no. Answers, my answers, do I believe the Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the land? Yes. It also says so in the California Constitution. Second question is, was a yes answer also? And the third, is it understandable, comprehensible? I believe so, I read it, I understand it. Who would be a domestic enemy? Answer, anyone who doesn't fulfill their oath of office or citizen that goes against the oath of office. Example, just happened to me last week up at State Capitol, there were counter protests. The protesters across the street were taunting me with their signs. I responded by holding out the American flag and just telling them in a loud voice, so they could hear, they were across the street, so, that my sign was more beautiful than theirs, which I believe it is, if you're an American. I was abruptly told to be quiet by a police officer, who I believe was a union police officer. That was a domestic, an act of a domestic enemy. Another example would be stopping someone from their legal right to carry a firearm. Right, so that's Second Amendment, amendment is one sentence. Pretty cut and dry, simple. Anything written, any code, ordinance written after that, to that point, is null and void, bottom line. I'm sure there are attorneys out there that will argue that point, but they'll, in the end, be wrong. But it's a problem in this country because too many people think that a lie told loud enough and long enough becomes the truth. And it does not. It becomes a louder, a longer lie, is what it becomes. The reason for my questions is because we cannot keep going down the road we're going down. This cradle to grave big government has to stop. It all has to start turning around right here at home in small government. By the fact which I brought up last time, you can't just keep spending money. I mean, I use this town as one example, and the redevelopment agency is one example, that's just one example. There's a lot of agencies that are going to have to go away. And I know we can't just do it all overnight. But it's got to stop here, this, we have too many examples of failed progressive liberal policies in this country. Detroit, Michigan is one, shining example of a failure. Take a look at a picture of Hiroshima, it'll make you think right then and there, we might have been better off dropping an atom bomb on Detroit sixty-five years ago, because Hiroshima looks like an Emerald City now, because of free market trade and low regulations and low taxes. The city council meetings cannot continue to be somewhere people come just to get money for programs that will not work and will cost my place. They'll just escalate the problems that already exist. The answer to all the problems is leave the people with the money, the money with the people, they can take care of themselves and not have to go to the government to ask for money. Thing to remember is, when you accept money from the Fed and the state, you're obligated to the Fed and the state. Remember your oath. You've not been necessarily voted into office. Do anything but be guardian of the law.
Your time's up, Mr. Hunwoodson, your time's up. Thank you for your comment.
Perfect timing.
Thank you. John Slaughterback.
John Slaughterback, City of Galt. At council meeting on February the first, I expressed some concerns. One concern was the cost to the citizens of Galt to install fiber optics. The Public Works Director did address one of my concerns, water meter implementation, and I appreciate that for what he did, I'm pretty well satisfied on that, and I appreciate what he did there. Al Bowen addressed fiber optics implementation. He didn't actually say, but implied, because of his knowledge of fiber optics, the cost to the citizens of Galt was insignificant because he said that fiber optics would be like a, or implied it would be like a super speed highway that other people would want to drive on. It'd go anywhere. AT&amp;E would, he said AT&amp;E, AT&amp;T, SMD and PG&E would want to connect to this, fiber optics. But I was told this transmission line would serve only the city of Galt. I don't think Al Bowen's hypothesis will come to pass. There is a new technology now, there's transmitters the size of a cellphone that install on telephone, light poles and any suitable fixture, and they are inconspicuous. It would be, how should I say, it would be wrong to go with the fiber optics at an unknown cost when there is new technology that could be used to reduce the cost. Now, don't get me wrong, if the Public Works Director can't install fiber optics for three hundred thousand dollars, then I'm all for it. Mayor, I mean, Mayor Payne, could you and the other council members give a report at the next council meeting on the cost to the rate pairs to install fiber optics and why there is a need to install fiber optics when other cities don't have the fiber optics and they're from their sewer plants to their city hall? I'm concerned about the cost of this, it's not going to be no super speed highway that others, the SMD and AT&amp;T and so on is going to connect to. And it's going to cost the citizens of Galt, the rate pairs, is what it's going to cost. I think we need to look into it further. And last, like I said, and I don't see how we can do anything for three hundred thousand, unless we can do it for three hundred thousand. That's what's been requisitioned, was three hundred thousand dollars for this project. If you can do it for three hundred thousand dollars, then I'm all for it. But otherwise, I'd like to hear something at the next council meeting, maybe you could find some information on it and talk to the Public Works or whoever and come up with some, some numbers. I'd like to hear some numbers on what it's going to cost to implement fiber optics. When there is a new technology out there, you need to consider it also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Patricia St. James.
Hello, Patricia.
Hello. Could we pass those up to the city council members, please? My name's Patricia St. James, and I'm here today representing the Galt Youth Alcohol and Drug Prevention Coalition. It's a coalition that's a crossover with the Galt Area Youth Coalition that was here in place for over four years. And what, what we've been doing is we're concerned about alcohol use, in particular drugs, obviously too, but at this time underage drinking. And one of the things that we've looked at doing is creating a parent guide that would give information to parents. And what this guide would do was, would be to give them specific about the brain and how it changes with the use of underage drinking. It would also give them other information about parenting and to empower the parents. This was put together by Sonoma County with the help of CARS, which is Center for Applied Research Solutions. What our organization would like to do, or coalition would like to do, is to use it as a template and put together our own packet here. It's a four pager, it'll be, my printer's getting a little low in ink, I think, a little prettier than this, but what we'd like to do is put in Sacramento County information and information specific to Galt and have it as a tool for parents. This would not cost us anything, the Center for Applied Research Solutions would pay for the development. And the reason why I'm here, though, is that on the back page, on the very last page, you'll see that there are partnerships within the community, and we'd like the city of Galt to be one of the partners that would be involved with this. The other thing we'd like is that we'd like to be placed with a link to the city so that people that are interested in getting, receiving this information, they can go online and get this information for themselves. We only plan to print out a few and have some available, and also would be available in Spanish. But again, it's a community coming together, the community working together to address this issue. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? I think, you know, we'll have to have a little time to read it and digest it and get back to you.
Okay, great. And can you pass that up, I'm sure I didn't have enough of this, but thank you so much.
It's good to see you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
You live in Elk Grove, don't you?
Yes, I do. But I worked here for thirteen years and I love Galt, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've seen you.
I'm still here.
Yeah.
Still here.
Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you, Patricia.
Okay, that's the consent calendar, and I pulled E four. Would you read that?
E four is Transportation Development Act Fund Claim for Fiscal Year 2010, 2011. You have the whole thing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, let's start over. There are nine items on the consent calendar. Number one, minutes of the special and regular meetings of February fifteenth, 2011. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, award of bid for construction of the Golden Heights well, number three, and Golden Heights Water Treatment Plant Expansion, Phase Three. Number four, which was pulled for discussion, Transportation Development Act Fund Claim for Fiscal Year 2010, 2011. Number five, Northern Sectional State School Bus Safety Rodeo. Number six, which was pulled for discussion, letter opposing the Department of Developmental Services budget cuts. Number seven, the Eleventh Annual Cool Truck Show Request. Number eight, resolution establishing fines and penalties for parking violations. And number nine, California Public Employees Retirement System, two years additional service credit program approval, 2011.
Thank you. The reason I pulled number four, E four, recently we had an unmet transit needs meeting with the public, and I was wondering if any of that money could in some way address some of the things that we heard at that meeting. Mostly, we talked about the fact that we no longer have any fixed routes, that everything is style-a-ride by reservation, or in some instances, we had citizens say they were having to wait a couple of hours to either be picked up. And it was the system, you know, if you don't reserve your ride, then you just have to sort of wait. But I, I know that we're interested in serving the people better, and I saw this and wondered if any of that money could be used to help solve those problems.
Well, certainly, the item we for counsel tonight is the recommendation of staff to use this money for transit purposes, and then money not needed for transit is then recommended to be used for streets and roads, which also benefit the community. The hearing process that was conducted a month or so ago, it was known as an unmet transit needs hearing, and Secog is testimony that night as to purported unmet uses, but they have not yet finished their process to make them, deem them to be reasonable to meet. Transit needs are either termed to be reasonable to meet or unreasonable to meet, and that's basically based upon. And that's basically based upon whether it serves one person or a group of people and what the cost is for that service. That process is being conducted by SECOG. And certainly, if they come back and they find that we have a reasonable to meet unmet transit need, that we have to take some of the additional monies that we're recommending to roll to streets and road programs, that we'll have to spend that on transit programs first. If they come back and say we have an unmet need and we need fixed routes, then yes, we would have to go back over in appropriate period of time, re-implement a fixed routes program here for the city, and this money would have to go for that first. But in order to move this forward, we're approving it, asking council to approve it tonight. It will then go to SECOG at their next meeting. We've been coordinating with their staff, and we can make adjustments to this going forward. The complaints that were heard at that meeting about two-hour waits is when people don't use the system right when they call and expect to be picked up right at that instant. We don't hear about the people that were picked up in five minutes. They never call and thank us for the good service. There are people that when they call, the buses are out picking up other customers. They don't stop picking up those people, deviate and go pick up the people that just called in. No matter what we do, we're going to have those types of issues unless we have just more buses, more buses available. But we have, as we mentioned, a fare box ratio problems. We're currently about half what we have to be, and that's just going to exacerbate that problem. If we don't fix those problems, then all this money disappears. We don't get any of it. They take it away. And so, the process that we're asking tonight is this is based upon staff's estimate to continue the service with the fixed...the style-a-rides that we currently have. And it's basically an unmet transit hearing, which I'm going to bring back to council. I think it's the second meeting in April when we get SECOG's results, that'll be brought back for the council, the public to hear what SECOG has to say about those and give them a chance for input.
Right.
And then we can make adjustments to the program accordingly.
And mainly, I just wanted to know if this money would be available if, you know, if we can address those needs. And my thinking is that if we're not giving the kind of service that people can use, then we're going to have fewer riders, and ultimately, we may use the service altogether. So, that's why it's important to me that we look at what we can do to improve the service, get more riders, keep the system here in Galt. Thank you very much. And with that, I would move to approve that.
One second. One second. Right. One second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne. Aye. And I believe Councilwoman Singleton has the next item.
Yes, I pulled six. This is Gene Davenport brought this to us, our last meeting. And I like what, Gene, your letter had to say. And what I did was, as like I said before, some of you may or may not know, I have a developmental handicap brother that I take care of who's deaf and blind, can't speak, he's had a stroke, so he needs a lot of care. And so, I fully understand Mr. Davenport's struggle to be heard, not here locally, but I'm talking about state, state level. So, I took the letter, and there's other copies at the end of that table there, and took it to our city attorney and asked him if he could go over that and highlight some points. Steve, would you be able to read that for me, please?
Yes, sir. And before I read it, I just want to point out that Councilmember Singleton had expressed to me some concepts that he would like to see embodied in this letter, and so that was the...what I tried to do in developing this proposal for the council's consideration. The letter reads as follows. It's to the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee, states as follows. "The proposed budget cuts to the programs and services for developmentally disabled individuals would have a severe effect on many residents of the city of Galt. Our developmentally disabled residents and their families rely on essential community-based services in order to survive. Without these programs, and in particular daycare programs, many of our developmentally disabled residents would have no social contacts and be forced to spend their days alone in their homes. An even greater concern is that the family members caring for these disabled people would be forced to quit their jobs in order to care for their disabled family members on an around-the-clock basis. This would result in increased poverty levels in our community and force many families that are now self-sufficient to seek welfare assistance from the county. While we recognize the extent of the financial crisis facing the state of California, cutting the programs and services that are available to developmentally disabled people is not an acceptable or reasonable solution. Forcing families that are already enduring the hardship of caring for disabled individuals into poverty would demonstrate a lack of social responsibility. Further, it does not make fiscal sense to reduce funding for services for developmentally disabled individuals when it will cause a direct increase in local spending for welfare and other related social service programs. We urge you to maintain the funding for developmentally disabled programs and services and to focus on solutions to the budget crisis that do not cause severe hardships to these individuals and their families."
Thank you, Steve. So, if I gave you a copy, do you have something you need to...
You know, I just...I want to thank Steve for doing this letter because it's really short and to the point. One thing is for sure, is politicians know how to read between the lines. And I think this kind of encapsulates it because it's important for society to realize what these people mean to us and what they do for us. It's not...it's not what I do for them. It's what they do for us. My stepdaughter, who I refer to as the unofficial mayor of Galt, no disrespect.
Okay.
And Darrell, and his interaction, can you imagine him having to stay home? He goes through these daycare programs. People will die if they don't have these outlets. They will become shuttered and they will die. I don't care what anybody says about the cost of these programs, it's nothing compared to what it accomplishes. My daughter got to graduate with the high school class. She was 21, and she...that was one of her proudest days. And we have her picture displayed all over the house. And that was just...that's a blessing that we have, and it's because these daycare programs work with these people to interact. And without that, I think it's just...it's a travesty. And it's just...I cannot imagine the suffering that would go on if these programs were cut. It's just...it scares me and it bothers me. I'll be fine. My daughter will be fine. My wife will be fine. Not everybody will. And if one person dies because of this, it's wrong. And I mean, I would be incensed to a point, I don't know where I'd go with it, because it's just...it's absolutely incomprehensible that we could do that to anyone. And we have to put a dollar figure on it and treat it like, well, it's a budgetary item. Shame on us for even looking at that. And so, I appreciate the city doing this. You really have touched me with this. Steve, it's a great letter. And I still say this day and day after anybody I talk to wherever I go, this is the best city I've ever been in when it comes to treating their people. It is. It's great. You guys are wonderful, and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Gene. I just want to state one thing. My brother, some of you have met, just means everything to me. Everybody say how lucky it is to be with me, but I'm lucky that I'm with him. I don't know what I'd do without him. Think of your brother or sister that's maybe not even developmentally disabled. Think of them sitting at home. How long do you think they would last sitting at home, not able to go out except, you know, because we're having to work? They're not going to last long. They'll drive crazy. So, anyway, just how I'd like to make a motion that we accept the revised letter that our city attorney has done for us. If I could get a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I call for the vote. We can just do this consensus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I want to thank Mr. Davenport for coming. I think most of us know your daughter. I know I do, and we certainly consider them very valuable citizens, and thank you for going to the trouble of bringing this to our attention.
And thank you for bringing them down here. Not everybody knows what it's like to have a developmentally disabled child and brother or sister, whatever happens to be. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gene. I would entertain a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'd motion to accept the remainder.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne. Aye. We have no scheduled matters, regular calendar. Item number one, I had placed on the agenda to get the approval from the council to organize a town hall meeting. We're calling it a town hall meeting. It's more of a meet your town, meet your citizens both ways. Since that last council meeting, we had a meeting with a group called CAS. It's called Cities and Schools Together. And it's made up of a couple of city council members, city manager, and representatives from both the high school and the elementary school. We have been working on something called the Youth Master Plan for a few years now, and we believe that it will be ready by the end of March 1st of April. And we feel like this meet your town meeting would be a wonderful time to introduce it to the community. So, I'm going to ask that we continue this to a future meeting when we know for sure when the Youth Master Plan will be published and available, which I predict will be in April. If that's okay.
Very good.
Okay. The next item, festival for the citizens of Galt, Vice Mayor Powers.
Okay. I'm recommending that beginning next year, the city council leads a new event for the Galt community during the Fourth of July weekend to celebrate our heritage and our nation. At the request of numerous community members, I envision this event to be much like the celebrations that we had years ago. I look forward to renewed participation by services, service clubs, community groups, and total community individual members. The committee currently running the Galt Festival has put a lot of time and effort in its present form, and I'd really like to thank them, and I hope that their final year would be a success.
Is there any motion that you want to make, or do we want some more discussion from the council members?
I guess I'd like to...
What is your...
I would really like the city council and the city of Galt to take over the Fourth of July celebrations of the city of Galt.
I would say we would need a motion to do that, wouldn't we? City attorney?
We're looking at you.
And are we ready for it?
Yeah, well...
Because we're going to be looking for funding and several different things.
I think that you certainly can do that before...but before you entertain a motion to take it over, it seems to me that we would need to send it to staff so that we can put some meat on the bone, so to speak, and then bring back a proposal that would embody whatever the festival is on the...around the Fourth of July, and then bring that proposal with some more details back to the council for consideration and then to vote at that point in time. So, if that's acceptable to the vice mayor, what I'd recommend this evening is that maybe the council vote to conceptually undertake putting on the July Fourth Festival and then direct the matter to staff for development of a specific program for council consideration.
I think...
I'm sorry.
I think anything that takes more than two hours, we do have to get the council approval, and I think that's what Vice Mayor Powers is asking.
Right, and we did have an initial meeting. So, yeah, I'm asking that we look into it with staff.
Do you have a speaker on this?
I don't have a speaker sheet, but I think you do have a speaker.
Excuse me. My name's Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt. This is a nonprofit that you're trying to take over? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm recommending that, yes, the city of Galt take it over next year.
Well, how can you do that? It's a nonprofit. It's already has its established bylaws and everything else. How can you do that?
As I understand it, the proposal is not to take over a nonprofit...
You just got through saying that they were going to take it over. You just got through saying it.
What I said is we'd like to change it. We don't want to take over the Galt Festival. We want to change it to a citywide festival.
As I understand it, Madam Vice Mayor, is that the proposal is to put on a festival, and the festival would be put on by the city of Galt. And were the city to undertake that type of a program, that would have no bearing on whether or not a separate nonprofit corporation continues to exist or not. And so, as I understood, the conceptual proposal was that the city would put on an event and that it would be directed back to staff to develop more details about this conceptual event that would be sponsored by the city.
Okay. Do we have a motion on directing this to the staff to come up with a plan? In other words, we're asking for more than two hours of staff time.
Right, and I would support the motion to take this to staff and have we do it, and we can look at it later.
Did we have...did you move that? Is that what you...
No, he moved it.
So, you're making the motion.
I second it.
Somebody didn't make it, so I'm going to get it.
Moved and seconded it. So, I don't think we have to have a roll call vote for this? We can just say all in favor? Oh, excuse me. Anybody else wish to speak to this matter? I'm sorry, we didn't have a speaker sheet, but you're certainly welcome to speak.
Well, that's what I thought. Just food for thought, there used to be a crawdad festival out in Ileton until the city took it over. No more crawdad festival.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. City manager's office.
The city manager talked to me about this before he left. I believe there's been some recent meetings with the CSD, the fire department, and in those meetings, I believe an interest was expressed to reestablish the two-by-two committee that used to meet. I believe it was Councilmember Shelton and was it Don Hughes?
Yes.
Is that with you?
Yes.
So, in reestablishing this committee, you would need to pick...if Councilmember Shelton still wants to stay on the committee, we do have one vacancy on the two-by-two. Assuming you want to stick.
No, I'll decline because I've been on the committee, the two-by-two, for several years. And I'm not...certainly, if no one else wants to do it, but there's five of us here, so...
I would definitely like a shot at it.
But I would also thank Councilman Shelton for his service on that. I know you were vital to it, so...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Cruz has volunteered. Would anyone else like to serve on this?
Well, I would like to serve on it, but I just don't think...I think, actually, myself, Councilman Shelton is more qualified than you.
I'll do what council would like from me. If you'd like me to be on it, fine.
I think he's offered to let someone else take it on. Let's take him as a work.
I will do that.
He's a gentleman, and he knows what we use.
I would like to give it a shot, but be expecting me to bend your ear.
I was going to say, you always go back to the expert.
We're on the safe side.
Yeah. We have Councilman Cruz and Councilwoman Singleton that have volunteered for this. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Community Development Department.
Yes, excuse me. The item report tonight is an update on the city of Galt Bike Transportation Plan. It's indicated in the staff report. The last major update was done in May of '02. I think we have done a couple of minor updates for funding purposes because you have to have a plan in place in order to qualify for the bike lane account, which provides grant funding for various bike lane and striping projects. I've identified some of the projects done in the past. They included Lincoln Way, Corillian Walnut, Industrial Drive, East Stockton Boulevard, and Carroll Drive as well. The document that you have before you is required to meet certain state... state, uh, requirements of the street and highway code, in order for the city to qualify for, uh, like, the, uh, bike, bike lane account, uh, funding programs. Um, and it has to be reviewed by the local transportation a- planning agency, which is SAACOG. Um, SAACOG has reviewed this plan, they find it in compliance with the necessary, uh, codes associated with streets and highways, and so therefore we meet that requirement. Um, the document, uh, as presented, has nine primary goals, uh, a whole host of objectives to implement, uh, and refine the, the document, um, regarding various types of projects. The, um, primary goal is to simply provide, you know, bike transportation and leisure activities consistent with what the standards are under the streets and highways, and to meet local, uh, community needs in terms of connectivity in the community, uh, which is one of the issues which was raised at the, uh, planning, or the Planning Commission, Recreation Commission meeting of February ninth. This document was presented to them, as well as the negative declaration for public input, comment, and a recommendation to the city council. It was recommended unanimously to be approved by the city council. Uh, they did have two, uh-
By the city council?
They were recom- what did I, did I say that incorrectly? They recommended that it be adopted to the city council.
Okay.
That wa- it was recommended for adoption.
Okay.
Um, one of the items that they noticed that, uh, or commented on that they would like to see an alternative to, or were concerned with, is the tunnel under Corillian Boulevard, as noted in the staff report. Uh, it, it is somewhat difficult, particularly if there's water in, in the channel, uh, but there is a project which would provide a crosswalk, a lighted crosswalk, uh, as an alternate for the continuation of the bikes, bike, uh, trail at that point. Um, secondly, they'd like to see increased access across Highway ninety-nine, because they see that as a barrier, and it truly is a barrier to, uh, vehicle transportation as well as bicycles. That should be accomplished, uh, with the C Street, A Street interchange improvement project, um, and once further connections are made ultimately to Corillian and Moringo Road. So, those are all future plans, and this document does take into consideration, uh, the plans that are set forth, transporta- transportation plans that are set forth in the city's, uh, twenty thirty general plan update. So it does take a look at all of the property west, uh, or excuse me, east of Moringo Road out to Cherokee. So it does, it does address those. Um, the document, uh, was subject to an environmental, environmental review. We prepared an initial study and negative declaration. Uh, we did finally receive a couple of comments, as noted in the report, we hadn't received any at the writing of the report. Caltrans sent out a letter, uh, they have no comments, or their comment was, they see no conflict with state, uh, facilities. The air quality management district sent a letter, uh, which we'll go over briefly in, uh, the PowerPoint presentation, uh, later, but none of the comments were substantive. We did add some additional information that they requested, uh, but it was just simply to basically inform the reader and provide for a better document. Um, tonight we have Marty Inoue, uh, from Omni Means. They were the consultant on this project and prepared it. Marty is here tonight, uh, to talk a little bit more in depth and give you a, uh, an overview of the document, um, and with that, I think we'll turn it over to Marty.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, again, my name is Marty Inoue. Um, I do have a, a brief PowerPoint presentation.
All right, thank you. There we go.
There we go.
Oh.
I was looking to, okay, here we go. Again, uh, I was, I'm a principal of Omni Means, and, uh, I was a principal on, on this project, of overseeing the, uh, quality, and actually I was the person writing all, all the, the street. Unfortunately, Scott Robertson had a conflict with another, uh, public presentation this, this evening, so you, so you have, have me. Just, uh, real quickly about Omni Means, I know many of you know who, who we are. Uh, we've been involved in many different transportation projects over, over the, probably the past twelve or thirteen years, in the city of Galt. Uh, notable projects, we are the design engineer for the, uh, Central Galt Interchange, the, uh, we're involved in the, uh, general plan, uh, circulation element update, and, uh, as well as the, um, the current work on the, uh, Twin Cities Interchange. Anyway, we've been involved in a number of different, different projects. In addition to what we do from a design standpoint and, and traffic circulation standpoint, we all, also do many bikeway and trail master plans. Uh, it's something that I, I personally love to do, I, I run and, and cycle, uh, a lot, uh, on, on my own time, and we're, and I'm actually in Sutter County doing, uh, a similar project. Uh, as to the process, uh, we started this project back in, uh, September, in October of, of, and, and had a chance to, I personally, with, um, a, a staff member, uh, rode the entire, uh, uh, street system of, uh, the city of Galt, of the past bike, uh, bicycle facilities, checked out a few other roadways, and looked at the other, uh, corridors that are now in your expanded, uh, general plan area, to look at, uh, road surfaces and, and the condition of your, uh, current, uh, bikeway system. In, uh, November, we had a, a public workshop, uh, with, uh, uh, didn't get a great attendance, but, uh, did get some input a- a- at that time, and based on that information, we then pulled together a, a draft, uh, bikeway, uh, uh, transportation plan. Staff had a chance to review the plan, and in December, uh, received a few comments back in, in January and December, and then had the opportunity to present to, um, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, I was looking at, see if Voice is there, uh, and worked with Voice, and, and working with the transportation, uh, with the, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission, and we did receive, uh, unanimous approval from, uh, the commission to move this project forward. Since that time, we, we had, had some additional comments that I'll raise, uh, later, and we're here t- uh, before you tonight to, uh, see, seek approval. One of the important parts of seeking approval tonight is that the, uh, uh, transportation, bikeway transportation account funds are, uh, the applications for, for grant funding are, are due later, uh, in March, and so we wanted to make sure that we had an approved plan. A little of the process, uh, if you're not familiar with, uh, the mandated, uh, uh, transportation, uh, bicycle, bicycle transportation plan update process, very straightforward, um, we need to evaluate, uh, existing conditions, uh, receive public in- input, establish, uh, with the community, goals and objectives of, of the plan. Uh, as, uh, Kurt stated, we have nine, um, goals, uh, and supporting objectives, and then develop a, 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 uh, bikeway network and, uh, facilities, uh, transportation plan, and with it, amongst the proposed improvements, we then need to set, uh, establish priorities, costs, and funding opportunities, and then move forward with, um, uh, an implementation schedule, uh, following, um, current, uh, state design standards. A little of the, what we are evaluating, there's basically three classes of, uh, bikeway transportation facilities. There's the class one, uh, transportation facility, which is the, uh, bike path, uh, you're, you're familiar with, that's an off-road facility. Class two is, uh, coming up with, uh, bike lanes, which are, uh, clearly marked with, uh, lane, uh, lanes that are, have to be a specific width, uh, per the, uh, uh, state standards, as well as, um, uh, appropriate, um, markings. And then, uh, class three are the, uh, share of the road, uh, opportunities. Again, the, the, the lanes don't have to be, uh, of any specific size, but we want to make sure that there, there is opportunity for a riding service, uh, uh, and that, that is safe for bicyclists to travel. Again, I had the opportunity to, uh, ride, uh, all, uh, it's not a great picture, but that was the only picture that, uh, Scott added me of my back end, uh, riding, uh, in my, uh, uh, spandex, I guess. But, anyway, this is in, in your park, you have a wonderful park, wonderful opportunities, uh, uh, in places well, well maintained. There was a comment, uh, that we discussed, as Kurt mentioned about, uh, at the Parks and Rec, of the undercrossing, uh, just checked with Greg, um, this is under, um, Corillian Boulevard, there's a undercrossing that, that often has water in it, it is designated as a part of the, the bike route system, and, uh, uh, Greg, uh, Public Works has sought and received, uh, funding to, to have a, a, uh, uh, crossing, uh, put, uh, above, uh, of, above this area where you can cross safely, um, uh, across Corillian Boulevard, in repla- replacing that, uh, that connection.
What will that be? Will it be just a, like a, um, crosswalk, or how will you accomplish that?
It'll be an enhanced crosswalk, it'll have a, the fi- in-ground flashing lights, like we, we put for some of the school areas, we're gonna put on A Street and on Lincoln. There would be embellishment, require a cut through the median island, probably some decorative pavement, it'll be much more visible because of everything else that's going on in that, but we'll sign it, it'll be marked much more for a pedestrian crossing because of the speeds. But basically, it's gonna be a, a mid-block crosswalk.
Okay.
We looked at, uh, your class one, your bike paths, uh, this, this happens to be down off of Dry Creek, uh, at, uh, Lincoln Way. We felt that there needs to be a little bit better identification, but it's great that you have the, the, uh, the path there. We then also looked at, you know, I mentioned your, your general plan expansion areas, where you largely have rural county roads, and we looked at, looked at the opportunities here, this happens to be off of Sergeant, and, uh, uh, in that area, and we looked down Bosso and, uh, Simmerhorn, and, uh, Cherokee, and all the facilities on, on the eastern side of, of your city as well, in terms of opportunity for, for connection. We then evaluated, uh, your existing facilities as to condition, uh, this is on Lincoln Way, and you can see that you have, uh, you know, well-designed, um, uh, uh, bike lanes, uh, on some of your facilities, well-maintained. Uh, this is, uh, that was on the north end of, uh, Lincoln Way, on the south end, similarly, um, uh, down, this is again near, um, Dry Creek, Lincoln Way has its bike paths, or bike lanes, and, and they're well delineated. In the downtown area, this is off of Four Street and, and C Street, uh, there was originally a part of that, there, the original bikeway plan that was, uh, created in two thousand and two, they have bike lanes in some of these areas, but since then, we, you've actually developed a downtown that has, uh, angled parking and things like that, and so we're now suggesting we need to think about sharing the road, and, uh, along with, um, uh, the air quality district and other people that comment, uh, SAACOG saying, yeah, that's fine, but maybe we ought to put, uh, uh, legends, or what they call sheroes, which, uh, are to share the road signs in, in the downtown area, and we're looking into that, and have included that in some of our proposals. There are some areas, um, uh, where bike lanes are, need, uh, the paint needs refreshing, and, uh, we identified those locations. And then there's areas like, uh, this is on A Street, just south of the high school, that, uh, actually doesn't, uh, we think that are, it's important, particularly when the Central Galt Interchange gets improved, and there's, there's connection, uh, across a freeway, that we need to make sure that there's bike lanes that provide, um, designated routes for, uh, uh, high schoolers to travel A Street, uh, to get, um, along, along A Street and to the high school, uh, across the, uh, the highway. Uh, we also looked at, uh, some, at existing facilities, and said, you know, oh, this is West A Street, uh, on the western side of y- your town, where there's actually some bike paths and, uh, and, uh, class one type facilities, but there's also a center median and a wide, wide street. Could it be more effective? And we're not necessarily saying this is what you absolutely should do, but we think that it, it is a good idea to consider, uh, because there's, there's no frontage that requires, uh, a lot of turning movement, to consider putting bike lanes and, and, and just a two-lane r- route, uh, down A, A Street, uh, as a recommendation, rather than having a, a center turn lane. It's an alternative con- concept that I think would better serve the, the riding public. In toll, this is the, uh, uh, the, uh, evaluation of existing conditions. I won't go into the, all the detail of, of the plan, but we, we noted, uh, places where there was non-conformity, uh, i- issues, and, as well as, uh, the, the evaluation. And this was all basically done on a bicycle. We, we took our notes in the field and, uh, and, uh, got through the whole, whole system. And then what we did was, we took that, that partial system, and you can see the dotted lines, where we now made connection with, with the solid lines, which was the, the definition of your, your existing system. And you can see how we connected, uh, your, your class one facilities in these areas, where now you have connection, uh, across town, uh, in, in some of these areas, as well as making sure that we do have, uh, the crossings of, uh, Highway ninety-nine here at A and, and, and C Streets, as well as at Amador and, and, uh, Simmerhorn, and looking at connections as, as far north as, uh, Twin Cities. Those are the opportunities that we're looking, uh, towards, and, and completing the system that's a part of this, um, uh, bicycle transportation plan update.
Marty, uh, you pointed out, uh, the crossing at Amador, going over ninety-nine. I think currently, we just have a sign that says you can get off your bike and walk across there, across the bridge, what, you know?
You know, that, that is true.
Not the mouth.
The thing is, to have class two bike lanes in this section, uh, east of Carroll, but uh, in this segment, the, the, the bridge is not wide enough, uh, to, uh, to support bike lanes, and then this segment here, although it's not heavily traveled, we, it's wide enough to put bike lanes on. There, there is considerable amount of truck parking, uh, also truck parking along, uh, uh, industrial avenues, that we think is important to support the industrial uses there, and e- and we don't feel that there's so much traffic that we need to protect the, the bicyclists from, from, from the, uh, to, that we need to have exclusive bike lanes. So what our suggestion was, is recognizing the competing need for, for truck parking in, in an area that's appropriate for truck parking, that's hilarious. I mean, this is along a railroad track that's, uh, that, you know, we're not impacting a lot of people with, with ha- having large trucks, semi-trucks there, then we ought to allow that to still occur, and, but, but make sure that the, there's bike routes on that- That provide the, the direction for connectivity, that, with it, with it, when a cyclist is on the road, they know that if that's a designated bike route and it's gonna go somewhere, or bike lanes that's gonna go somewhere, that's gonna get them to their, their destination. I'm gonna talk about a little handout that we're gonna, uh, eventually provide you. The, uh, we also turned around, and we developed a matrix for prioritization, from safety, usage, connectivity, ease of improvement, and we class, uh, we rated and came up with a priority system, uh, and, uh, identified, uh, the top priorities, I won't get into the, the list of all the things. I, I would wanna point out that down here, these are largely new roads that are, uh, that when your area starts extending, y- as, as the city grows, you know, we, we expect that the, the new development will pay and implement tho- those improvements on the widening of Bosso Road and, uh, uh, Cherokee and, and, and those types of facilities. Again, going back to the, uh, the improvements here, we're looking at the improvements around Amador, uh, a- and this was based on the priority schedule. They said, hey, let's get the sheroes and, uh, share the road signs in the, in the downtown area, that was a top priority. Uh, improve A, A Street with, uh, bike lanes, as well as A Street, uh, when, when the freeway, uh, is, uh, interchange is, is improved, looking at improvements of class two facilities on Elm, as well as on, on Amador. Um, as Kurt mentioned, um, the air quality district, uh, made recent comments, uh, we have edited a, a few, few pages that, uh, that had to do with, uh, the location of shero signs, uh, some, uh, other issues relative to types of, uh, racks for bicycle parking, to even suggesting of how to, uh, look at maybe, um, uh, back-end downtown parking. Uh, and they had comments, we provided responses, uh, to each one of those directly, and then edited the report, uh, appropriately to respond to their concerns. I, I don't think that there was any substantive issues that said that the, that there was anything inadequate about the report and, and its meeting the criteria, uh, to be a, 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 an approvable document that would, would serve to allow funding for, um, future, um, uh, bicycle improvements. With that, I'm here to answer any questions, and, uh, and-
Yeah, I've got a question.
Councilmember Singleton?
I'm sorry.
Please go ahead.
Jump in there. I was, I was, I held myself back. Uh, on your, your slide there, you showed some improvements, uh, and it wasn't in your priori- prioritized part of your, your schematic there, but-
The grid?
Uh, you showed on, down on Cough Road, for example, uh, a proposed class two. Uh, you showed on, down on Cough Road, for example, uh, a proposed Class Two. Uh, now, when you get to the west of that, uh, you've got, uh, proposed, uh, SAC County Class Two. I guess, is that CL Class Two?
A- actually, these, uh, yellow lines-
Yeah.
Are the proposed SAC Class, and, and actually in the report, you have a possible revision-
Oh, yeah, I gotta hear it. Yeah.
There is a, uh, the, Captain of County Regional, uh, County-wide Bikeway Master Plan. Identified all of these yellow roads as the roads that, that are coming into the city of Galt.
Okay.
Okay, so, so what we, what we did was, all we did was we said, "Okay, these are the proposed routes that the county said, uh, assume coming in. We need to make sure that we overlap and make sure that we have connection as those routes from, from the region enter into our city."
Well, the only reason I was asking is 'cause like Sargent and all those other roads, I mean, very narrow roads, very, very dangerous for... I mean, you have to be crazy to have your bicycle out on those roads, you know, uh, 'cause I won't do it, you know? But I was just wondering, uh, what your plan was, uh, for, like Sargent. I mean, they are narrow road. I, I just don't be... Is it gonna be something that we're gonna be able to accomplish by having a bike lane out there or...
You know, and that was my point. I was suggesting that we, we prioritize improvements in the interior of the...
Just the interior. Okay.
All the new roads, I mean, and, and we're talking about, as you look at these bench here-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the extension of, uh, wall that, uh, uh, is out here-
But Sal's a good, good example, yeah.
Start, you know, heading in, in these areas, if you're taking out into the city-
Right.
I mean, what, what these will get approved is when, uh, when development, uh, this, this, these that have lengthy designation actually get developed and then, and then those, those roads will, uh, when, a- and that's the sort of work about getting the white, white way master plan put together. If now the city has a plan, we have circulation plans that, uh, which we helped you create as part of the general plan update. It says, "Okay, these roads need to be fixed wide to support future development." In addition, we have a bikeway master plan that confirms that, that, uh, that, that, that in addition to the number of lanes on that road, the, uh, there needs to be bikes, and these are the type of bikes, so we can identify Class, the, the extension of Class, Class One facilities in, in these areas, uh, along, uh, Deadman, uh, Gulch and things like that.
Okay.
And, and then, uh, two bike lanes into these areas, as well as, uh, uh, General Warren and Bosso to make sure that there's smooth connectivity that's in a, in efficient and correct, uh, correct manner to support, you know, the development of this, this area.
Well, yeah, I, I like good connectivity, but also make sure it's safe, you know, 'cause, uh, yeah.
It, it's safe and it'll, well, hopefully when those roads get expanded and worn-
Yeah.
To support, uh, you know, the breadth of the development, if you close out in, in the meat area-
Right, right, yeah.
And make the roads and get approved for the, this city here, that will improve bike, uh, bike.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, any questions? Councilman Cruz? Uh, then I have a couple. It's just a couple. Um, Sargent, now that will be our western, uh, city limits boundary, correct?
City Experimenter.
Experimenter.
Okay, so will the whole road belong to the city as opposed to Twin Cities where the city has a little bit? The state has some, the county has some? I'm, I'm wondering if we have control, if we will have control over Sargent to have some kind of bike access, especially to Walker Park?
Y- yeah, the, uh, there's two things you could do. One, um, through the annexation process, you could look at, uh, requesting that the right-of-way go to the west side of Sargent. Um, that way, we would own the whole road. Downside is we have more maintenance. The other downside is, is that we then control, uh, encroachment-wise, um, access to that road for repair work or whatever, which are actually county property owners. So historically, that is why the county has looked at putting the city limit line down the middle of the road so that if you're on the north side of the road, for, like, along, uh, Twin Cities, that's county right-of-way and those are county residents. On the south side, city residents, city right-of-way.
And you know, thinking about Sargent, I don't see development happening for, on the city side of it. So I guess if we ever wanna have the kind of, uh, bike-friendly road that we want, it's not gonna come from development.
It could come from county development. You know, we, we receive proposals, you know, when we have development in the county, uh, we could recommend that it's within the sphere of influence. Our bike plan says, you know, we need, uh, bike lanes or, you know, Class Two bike lanes, uh, which is basically what they're asking for, what, what it shows here. Uh, whether the county agrees with that or not is, really, it's their jurisdiction. It is the sphere of influence. It is not the city of Galt, so you are somewhat at the mercy of the, of the county.
I just look at Walker Park. It's gonna be such a big part of our community and we should be able to get there safely on bicycles. Um, so I, I, you know, think that's something that we really need to keep in our, in our minds when we're planning this. Um, if there aren't any other questions, I wanted to comment on what an excellent, excellent report this was. And in reading it, it made me want to roll up my sleeves and say, "Okay, let's get a plan for implementation." Uh, including, uh, uh, law enforcement being involved. Um, I frequently get complaints from citizens about the way, usually it's adults, are riding their bicycles on the wrong side of the road, not stopping at intersections. So I see a big need for, uh, education as far as wearing helmets, what's proper. Um, we had a team-building workshop and the facilitator had an excellent plan whereby we had a three-year plan and then we had a shorter plan. And we had a grid worked out where it said specifically what we're gonna do. For example, we're, we might say, "We want the police department to conduct education twice a year or something." And then we had a person that is responsible for it. We have a timeline. And, uh, I would like, uh, to see us do something like that, 'cause like I said, it was, it's an excellent plan. Um, uh, one other thing, now, does the county have a bicycle master plan? Uh, they do? Um, because we have a lot of people that love, you know, they live in Galt because it's a small town and they love to ride out in the county. Uh, and it would be, you know, it would be great if we could work collaboratively with the county on that.
That's what I'd like to say. I really, really appreciate your, 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 your comments and, uh, appreciation that you mean a lot. Uh, unfortunately, uh, I, I mentioned that Tom Austin was gonna be, be here and he said, "We, we got a little mixed up. We, we thought this meeting was gonna be, or, or this was gonna be a couple of weeks later." And at that time, we were gonna present something to you as, as, as an initial lead behind. So I, I didn't, we didn't get it done for, for the city of Galt, but we will get it done for, for you. This is for the town of Loomis. But you mentioned, uh, a, uh, what we're intending to do and, and we'll figure out who can produce it. We'll, we'll produce some, uh, some additional, uh, some initial copies and certainly add a template for, for other future copies. But this will be your bikeway master plan. So it's, so at library, as you know, at schools and other, that city, you can, you can have a map, a little, something like that. And you talked about guide for bicycle safety, uh, a little guide of how to get around the town. Uh, we, we, we put together this, this a little, this information. We think, you know, that it's, it's nice to have a plan that sits on somebody's shelf or that is adequate for, to meet a, a, a funding requirement. But how do you, how, how do you get it into the users' hands?
Mm-hmm.
We felt that we, we put all the mapping together already, that we'll, we'll, we can put together a little, uh, handout that, that, uh, that shares that information, that it's gonna be readily available to, to your citizens. So, so in the next couple of weeks, we will have that available. Uh, it was, it was based on our copies and then how you wanna distribute them there, if, if, if it's gonna be up and used by then. We wanted, uh, we think that's important, that, you know, we wanna find this too. And the only way we can make it use is to make it available, so.
And I was disappointed in the, um, participation that we had from, uh, the citizens. But I would also say it's a constant battle to, uh, get people involved in the community. And so another part of what I see happening from this is, um, a program for promotion, uh, um, publicity on it. Um, I, I have to confess, I was, uh, uh, coming home from the city hall today and I saw two people on bicycles in different places. And I stopped and got out of my car and went over and asked them, "You know, we're having a, a meeting tonight on, on cycling. Do you have any suggestions?" And, uh, they were, you know, happy to talk to me. Uh, but the thing that they both said is getting across Ninety-Nine. Uh, we have great, um, places on both sides of Ninety-Nine to ride bikes if you wanna be in the country. You know, you can go out Harvey Road, and then if you go over to the east side, we've got wonderful parks and things. It's just getting there. And that's sort of the story of, of Galt, is, uh, Highway Ninety-Nine seems to be a continual, uh, challenge, I'll put it that way. Uh, but I know that it's important for us to get funding. Uh, the state government, the federal government has said, "We believe bicycling is something that is important for recreation, um, for commuting, to preserve, uh, the air." As we saw, um, the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Board took time to come and, uh, give their, uh, input on this. So I think we've got a great plan. We've got some goals out there in front of us that can make Galt a really special place. We're never gonna beat Davis, and I don't know that I really want to. But, um, anyway, I've said enough. I was very, um, very happy with the work that you did. Thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, is there anyone that would like to move that we approve the staff's recommendation?
Hi, don't move.
One second.
Okay, uh, let's have a roll call, folks.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Hi. Councilwoman Singleton?
Hi.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Hi.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
A pass unanimously. Uh, let's see, where are we now? Okay, Culture and Recreation Department, July fireworks show.
Lights, lights out?
Thank you, Marty.
Thanks. Uh, good evening.
Lights?
Do, Liz, lights?
Liz, lights.
Uh, do the fourth, uh, falling on a Monday, uh, this year, staff is recommending that the annual fireworks show be conducted on Saturday, July second, so as not to impact the market operations. That concludes my report.
Do you, no, that's not enough, boy. Do you wanna, you wanna go for...
Do you want the first? Do you want Friday the first?
No, not at all. Do you wanna explain what, how it impacts the market?
Well, no, if, if you're to conduct it on, uh, Monday, July fourth, it, it projected, uh, one thousand dollars in revenue loss. Also would have an impact on approximately eighty vendors that occupy two hundred and ninety spaces at the market that come in on, on Monday mornings at nine AM. Also, per the fire district, uh, we're required to remove all the shade structures. So in removing those, it'd probably be unlikely that we could have them up by Tuesday, Tuesday and Wednesday markets, which, if you notice, it's gonna be about a hundred and five degrees, and I think they're much needed during that time of the year. And then also for cleaning of the grounds, it'd have to be conducted, uh, late in the evening as to disrupt the neighborhood. And then, um, the surrounding parking lots, if you notice, uh, it's a big mess after the Fourth of July with all the little, uh, Red Devil fireworks that are around all our parking lots, uh, in the general area of the, the market ground. So, again, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission and staff has reckoned that we conduct the annual show this year on Saturday, July second.
And thank you for explaining that, because we have some people that are diehards that say, you know, "The Fourth of July is when you should have the for- the fireworks." So I thought it was important that you explain why you wanna do that. Thank you, Marty.
I'm one of those diehards that thinks the Fourth of July should be on the Fourth of July, but, you know, I understand the way it is 'cause we're, I guess, unique with having the market, but...
We, we appreciate your tolerance there.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, is there, um, no, is there a motion to approve staff's recommendations?
I'll make a motion too. We approve.
One second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's passed. Communications, uh, does anyone have any written communications they wanna share with us? Uh, then we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency.
Okay, board members, Towers?
Uh, aye.
Singleton?
Hi, here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Um, public comments?
I have no speaker sheet.
No speaker sheets? Uh, consent calendar?
We have two items. The first one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. And number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrant.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make such a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? It is approved, oh, uh, call for the vote, uh, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor, uh, Chair, Chairman, Chairperson Payne?
Aye. Motion has been approved.
Um, okay, we will now adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council and city clerk's report.
Just a couple reminders, um, the Galt City Council Youth Committee will meet March seventh at six PM. Um, it says city hall community room on, in your packet. It will actually be held in the council chambers, this meeting. Uh, the March ninth Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting has been rescheduled to March sixteenth here in the council chambers at seven o'clock. On March tenth, the planning commission meeting will meet here at six PM. Um, a reminder of the second community workshop for the Central Galt Corridor. It will be held on March thirtieth at the Littleton Center from six thirty to eight thirty. And that takes us to our next meeting.
Okay, comments by staff? Any comments?
I guess.
I would like to actually, um, advise council and community on just some progress that we've made on the redevelopment agency bond, um, issue. So if you will just, um, bear with me for a moment. Um, as council will recall, we started this discussion, um, back in November, December. We received approval to pursue some funding for various projects that we anticipated to undertake in the redevelopment agency. Um, back on February first, we actually presented the board and the, um, council with various documents, maximum amount of bond issuance, the maximum amount of interest rates and, and so forth. Um, and I am pleased to report that on Friday, we priced the bond. And it's, um, been a world-class experience. But, uh, I do wanna report that we did present our, um, case, our projects to Standard and Poor's. We did receive a triple B-plus rated, um, issue. We did price on Friday afternoon, and it was one of those items where we were having, um, going, um, analyzing the rates for the taxable portion of, of the bond sale. So we broke it up into two series. The first series was seven point seven million dollars, seven million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars of tax exempt bonds. The rates are, range from seven point zero to seven point three seventy-five. We had Series B, which is comprised of just over six million dollars, and those, that's the taxable portion of our issue. And those rates range from a four twenty-five to a nine twenty-five. Again, approval was not to exceed nine seventy-five, um, as approved by the board and city council. So all of the amounts were within the parameters as approved and authorized by council. And we, I have my cellphone with me because we are bond, uh, attorney is still going through the final paperwork. We are anticipating this issue will be closed tomorrow morning. So, um, we will keep you posted, but at least wanted to update you on what has happened so far.
That's, that's exciting news. We have a lot of plans and it costs money to do that. Um, so what's the next step then as far as the bonds? Would they, um, be put up for sale or how, what happens next?
Well, the underwriter has already, um, we entered into an agreement with them on Friday afternoon. We were able to price it around one fifty-three in the afternoon. We had a deadline of about two o'clock, uh, five PM Eastern Time, so we were pretty close. Um, we did look at some comps that were sold yesterday. We had, um, a, an A-minus rated, uh, on the tax exempt that did a little better than we did, but, uh, we had another comparison that we did today and it was a, an A-rated bond issue taxable that, um, had higher rates than what, uh, we had sold. So, um, we were hopeful to be under the double digits and we were successful. Um, the other agency was, um, not there. So, um, we, we were wondering how the market would do this year and we were happy with what we actually did on Friday. So, um, we, we were wondering how the market would do this year and we were happy with what we actually did on Friday afternoon. We expect that bond proceeds will hit our bank account tomorrow morning. Um, they have wire instructions, so I'll be on the line with them tomorrow morning. And, uh, from there, we'll invest in probably some T bill, something that we can start to access. And we'll see how far that money will take us. There is a long list of projects. We have been working with, um, Greg and Kurt actually provided some information to bond council today. Um, because we do know that we have some pending projects and we're trying to get those off and running already. We've had some reports that have already started the process and, uh, we want to just continue with those. And, um, I think construction is just right around the corner and so forth, so we're very anxious to get those funds and we expect that that will happen tomorrow morning. Um, so that's where we go from here. And, uh, we are still on, uh, reviewing the different proposals that are coming from the state and, um, and see how that will affect us if at all. Um, but, um, again, we're just keeping an eye on those. Our city attorney is keeping us apprised as well on that. Our bond counsel on different proposals that are coming from the governor's office and to the legislature. So we will keep council informed as we have an opportunity to see what comes out of their office and have, um, a chance to evaluate the impact if any to us.
What kind of proposals would we be getting from the state regarding these bonds?
Well, there's, there's no proposal as it relates, uh, directly to this bond, but there is a proposal that was released last week from the, uh, Department of Finance. And, um, it was a twenty-six page piece of proposed legislation. And, um, essentially that if the legislation was adopted, it would put an end to redevelopment agencies by July one of this year. Um, if it was adopted, it would become effective immediately and it would essentially, uh, for all intents and purposes, freeze, uh, all new redevelopment activity on the date of adoption. And then it would, post July one, it would call for successor agencies to be formed. And basically those successor agencies would, uh, take in redevelopment, uh, money, the tax increment, pay off all existing debt that had been entered into prior to dissolution of the redevelopment agencies. And, uh, through a series of years, uh, essentially wind down, uh, the redevelopment agencies statewide. Very, a very shocking and, uh, uh, drastic proposal.
So even though we have the bonds and we have them sold, they could take that money and pay off the debt, the bond debt and?
Well, if this proposal went through as, uh, as written, we would potentially find ourselves in a situation where we had, uh, money in the bank, but we were prohibited from entering into future contracts to spend that money. So as it relates to, uh, contracts that we've already entered into, uh, the Brewster Building being one of them, we'd be able to use the bond money to repay, uh, funds that have been expended for that project. But for example, if we wanted to acquire additional property, uh, in historic district, we would be prohibited from entering into the contract to acquire that property.
Uh, uh, one of the comments that the, the bond attorneys actually came together and, and we were looking at, uh, hitting the market on Thursday, but because of the governor's proposal, um, various, uh, bond attorneys, um, met and they decided they wanted to evaluate the, the proposal. And they came up with the opinion that if the bonds were sold, that, um, based on the, um, preliminary official statement, official statement, which is what the document is that the bondholders actually rely on to purchase the bonds, that there are some covenants in there that says that the bond proceeds will be used for certain purposes. Um, some of those being to construct various projects. So if, um, um, a successor agency was to say that we could no longer enter into those agreements, then they believed that they would be in breach of the current official statement so that there would be other additional consequences. So they felt comfortable in continuing to authorize the bond sales. There was an addendum that was posted to the official statement on Thursday night, which is why we waited for the additional day and went to market on Friday, just to ensure that the bond purchasers had that additional information and had that comfort of the, uh, bond attorneys to say that they believed that it would be a breach of the contract if they did not use the funds for the intentions, um, or for the purposes intended. So again, we are certainly on top of this project. We are analyzing the various components as they are released, but wanted to bring council up to speed on, um, just the information that we've received and why we did continue with the bond sale based on the information and, and the opinion, the guidance and recommendation of our bond attorney, um, on the impacts that they could have on this bond issue for the city. So we felt that at that time that we were still, um, able to sell the bonds. We can still continue with the projects we have. Who knows what will happen in the future, but at this point, they felt confident in, um, the position that they were taking on us proceeding with this, um, bond issuance.
Uh, thanks to staff for acting so quickly. Uh, we came down to what, the last seven minutes before it was too late?
So we're waiting for the money to hit the bank tomorrow morning, so we'll go from there.
Okay, well, I think mostly it's good news, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, but we're moving forward as best we can. Any other comments by staff? Councilmember, um, Singleton, go for it.
Well, I was just going to mention that, uh, I, I met Monday with, uh, LAFCO, uh, Sacramento LAFCO. Uh, and if you don't know what that is, that's a, that's a local agency formation commission. Uh, I'm an alternate on that, uh, commission. Um, it's a regulatory body that, uh, is responsible for, uh, the discouragement of urban sprawl, uh, preservation of open space and the, uh, encouragement of, uh, orderly formation and development of local government agencies based on local conditions. So they, they met with me yesterday to bring me up to speed, uh, in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow night at five thirty in Sacramento, um, on what proposals are coming up. Uh, we review things throughout Sacramento region and, um, I've met with Peter Brundus, who's the executive officer, and Donald Lockhart, who is the assistant executive officer. Uh, it's just one of the commissions I'm on to help, hopefully help the city of Galt, uh, and, and us, uh, improve our township and, uh, keep them orderly, keep orderly as we can here in Galt.
Thank you for that report. And if you didn't know this, LAFCO has the responsibility of approving if we want to extend our sphere of influence, annexation, uh, districts. I think they have an influence on the consumers, higher districts.
Yeah, they do have a special district, yeah.
Thank you for that report and thank you for, uh, representing Galt. Vice Mayor Powers, have you done anything lately?
Have you done anything lately? Uh, yes, I attended the, um, Transit Authority, which is a, a joint powers group with, uh, counties and cities. And it has to do with all the transportation issues of which we know Mr. Holliday is very well first in and very well informed in and does quite a bit for our city. And, um, we, the last meeting was very interesting because we did go over all the projects that were out in, you know, the cities. And, uh, our Galt interchange was one that was mentioned and the progress of it was shown.
Good, thank you. Councilman Shelton, anything you'd like to report on?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I got the flu like several other people and I'm certainly glad that I went and got my flu shot. As my physician said, it probably would have been a lot worse.
Yeah, they said there was a really bad one going around right about now.
Trust me. Especially with the firefighters, you know, you have police officers, any emergency personnel, medical, I mean, you have everything going on right now. Biggest concern from what I'm gathering is, is the pneumonia and bronchitis. It's, it's thick. Other than that, I hope, hope everyone has a great week.
I would just like to say that we missed you from the last meeting and glad that you're back looking rosy and pretty healthy.
I'm too honored to stay down forever.
Councilman Cruz, what have you been up to?
No good as usual. Actually, uh, last Thursday, the twenty-fourth, I met with the Sacramento Library Authority Board and that was my first meeting. And they have some very wonderful things coming up for us as far as our library and the expansion and improvement of.
Oh.
So I look forward to working with them more.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Um, before I report on, uh, SA-COG and a couple of other things, um, as always, our Galt Police Department has brought, uh, honor to our city. Uh, a very important issue right now in the community has to do with homeless. And, um, the Galt Police Department worked with the county and actually went out and located the homeless people in Galt. And, um, actually did a count and I think we have, that we know of about forty homeless people in Galt. Um, and I'm sure there are others, you know, families maybe that are doubling up. But, um, the Galt Police Department took time out to cooperate with the county and, um, actually go out and, and care about these people. And sometimes policemen don't get credit for doing these positive things about caring for people. And I think we have a great police department and, um, definitely they do care about the citizens of Galt. So they got this wonderful certificate from, uh, a certificate of appreciation from the county, which we will display proudly in our case out in the lobby. Thank you so much. Uh, the other thing I would share with you is I attended SA-COG meeting and, um, wasn't much good news. Uh, Mike McKeever, who's the CEO, and Susan Peters, who's the chairman, went to Washington DC and didn't have much good news to come back with. Uh, they said it was totally chaotic. You have all these new, uh, legislators that, um, have new ideas and, and everyone's going in different directions. Um, and they, they were saying that it looks like there won't be any grants. And when I say any grants, of course, that's, um, generalizing too much, but there wasn't much good news of money coming from, from the feds. And as I've said before, Galt is going to have to find a way to, uh, sustain itself. And our, our, I see, yeah, there, and our shop local committee along with Voice Jeffries is working very hard to retain the retail and the businesses we have here. We're looking at what we can do to attract new businesses. So then, um, as some of our citizens have said, we can stand on our own and not depend on, uh, so much federal money and state money. Um, the other thing I would, uh, ask the council, if we could have on the next agenda, uh, approval of the constitution that we talked about. She'll have some samples for you to look at. You can pick it, pick out what you like. And we will have it, uh, displayed in our lobby as a reminder to the council, to the citizens, uh, what our constitution means. So if there is no further business or comments, the meeting is adjourned.